Underwriting support for this program is provided by the Eureka Teachers Association's School Board Liaison, Philip Middlemiss. Thank you.
Okay, we're meeting the open session and we have a word out from closed session.
Item number E six, seven, eight, and nine, they will all be discussed in the continuing closed session after the open session.
Pledge of Allegiance. Susie?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Any adjustments to the agenda?
Yes, Mr. President, we do have a couple of adjustments. We need to move C three from the study session, the November bowed initiative resolution, to N twenty-nine as part of the discussion portion of the agenda for this evening. And then we need to pull item number M twenty-seven, which was the MOU with Eureka City Schools and the City of Eureka for the after-school programs because we are unable to come to a consensus with the City of Eureka on that MOU. So we still have to negotiate that further. We'll bring it back to the next board meeting.
Okay, can you come to the podium?
Hello, my name is Wakara Scott. I am seventeen years old this Friday, and I am a junior. I'm Eureka FFA's two thousand twelve, two thousand thirteen school board representative. I am in Ag Geo Science College Prep with Ms. Sarwinski, our new Ag teacher. We are really fortunate to have her this year as a teacher and advisor. My SAEs this year are Aquine Placement and Market Hogs for both Redwood Acres Fair and Humboldt County Fair. Eureka FFA has been very busy since schools been out. We've had Redwood Acres Fair, Fireworks Sales, Chapter Officer Retreat, and the Humboldt County Fair. The officers also got together the week before school started to decorate the Ag Department classrooms. Today, we had two hundred and fifty of our parents, students, administration, and staff for our Welcome Back BBQ. September nineteenth is our first FFA meeting of the year. We will be discussing FFA and opportunities within the FFA. The first Booster Club meeting will also be held at six o'clock. September twenty-sixth is our Green Hand initiation. A Green Hand is the first level of active membership in the FFA. The freshmen and older FFA members will also be participating in team building, scavenger hunts, and other games, as well as the water slide at the end of the day. After all the water slide fun, we will end with a barbecue. September twenty-eighth and twenty-ninth, Eureka FFA's officer team will be attending COLC, Chapter Officer Leadership Conference, in Dixon, California. We will learn leadership skills and techniques to bring back to our chapter, as well as work with chapter officers from the North Coast region. It will include our lip sync and the conference dance. Thank you for your time. I look forward to the next month's meeting. Are there any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Wakara, I actually should have said something. I enjoyed watching you in the round robin at the fair as well and the trademark smile that she had, and I believe you got second place?
Yes, I got second place.
So congratulations on that.
And fifty dollars from the Farm Hero.
Oh, very nice.
Thank you.
Any other student reports? Superintendent's report.
Yeah, it's been a busy going back to school this year. And happy to report, I was able to attend the back-to-school nights of Lafayette and Washington. And then tomorrow night, I believe, we have Alice, Bernie, and Grant coming up, so invite you all to come out to those. I already attended, they had a meet and greet, so it's kind of confusing between the meet and greet and the back-to-school night. They had those already at Grant and Bernie, and attended those as well. The first day of school, I attended the Zane PBIS training. That was really interesting to watch and see what's going on over there at Zane, and got to meet a lot of the staff members over there at that point. First day of school, also, I visited all the rest of the schools, was able to spend a little bit of time on each of the campuses. Happy to report that we had a very smooth opening. Most notable was Eureka High School. We had very few students unscheduled on the first day of school, and when I say unscheduled, meaning some sort of schedule conflict. And so, in short, no students waiting in the hall, which was fantastic. And we only had a handful, somewhere in the range of thirty students that had some sort of scheduling conflict that had to be called into the office and get their schedule redone. So I want to commend Eureka High on their effort with that and really moving forward in the scheduling process. Really enjoyed the staff welcome-back on August twenty-first. We had approximately four hundred of our employees over here at Eureka High School Auditorium. I got to get up and give my little, I call it the sage-on-the-stage presentation. That was real fun, enjoyed that. Really appreciated the reception of the staff. I felt like I was very well-received and got a lot of positive support from staff. So that was very exciting for me, and I was happy to see all of you trustees out there as well, all of you attended, and thank you for coming to that. I think it was a nice kickoff to the school year. Like to invite each of you to turn, tune into the Brian Papstein on KINS Radio, that's one oh six point three, where I will be interviewed with Gary Eagles. Ooh, Mickey, help me out. Do you remember off the top of your head, I'm putting you on the spot, what date that was? I should have written down the date, but I didn't. It's September twenty-something. I'll get back to you with the exact date, but it is September twenty-something. But anyways, that should be interesting, get some more press out there about Eureka City Schools and talk with Gary Eagles on there. And then, just in conclusion, started my, what I consider the best part of my job, and that's getting out in classrooms, started that this week. I've been to all of the elementary schools, with the exception of Lafayette. I've been to Eureka High School today, where I've visited the Science Department, and gave me a real nice snapshot out there in those classrooms and seeing what's going on instruction-wise, and there was some fantastic teaching going on inside those classrooms, and we've got some great students for this year, so really enjoyed that.
Any board member reports?
I would like to report that I attended Zane's seventh-grade orientation the Friday before school started, and it was absolutely outstanding. I was very impressed with the new students coming in. I was impressed with the eighth graders who led the seventh graders around, and I thought it was a very, very successful day, and all of the students I talked to, both seventh and eighth graders, were really, really pleased with it. So I think it's a good thing to do every year, and I think this was an exceptionally good year.
I'll just say that I had attended Washington and Lafayette's back-to-school nights, and those were both really exciting, and it was fun to see all the kids excited and looking on the window to see what teacher they had and what classmates they had. It brought me back memories to when my kids were doing that. And I also, as Dr. Van Vuck said, we all attended the Staff Assembly, and I really, really, really enjoyed that, and I really wanted to tell you that I really appreciated your message. I thought it was a really nice message, and I felt like, I felt a lot of positive feedback from that, and it just had a really good feeling, and I'm really excited about starting the new year.
I just want to thank Fran for complimenting the seventh and eighth graders at Zane, because both my grandsons are attending Zane, one in the seventh grade and one in the eighth.
And I have an eighth-grade granddaughter, so there we go. And you have a seventh-grade son.
I'm just thinking, ADA, ADA. That sounds fantastic.
I'd like to say that I also attended Lafayette and was late, but also managed to get to the Washington back-to-school nights. I helped with the barbecue at the Link Orientation for Incoming Freshmen at the high school, and I just want to say those Link kids, I mean, they do a fantastic job, and it's a very important thing for these kids to be able to go with a peer group from class to class, and they take a tour, and it is really something to keep going, because I really think that it's very important. And I forgot what else.
So, we are moving to public comment on non-agenda items. This is the time designated on the agenda when members of the public may bring before the board matters that are not listed on the agenda. Legally, no action or significant discussion can take place about a matter not listed on the agenda. Therefore, board members and district staff members usually will not respond to public comments. The reason for this is the Brown Act. No significant discussion can take place on an issue that has not been properly noticed to the public. As printed on the agenda, individual speakers will have three minutes to address the board. Each topic is limited to twenty minutes total, and we have a light system up on the podium. Green means go, yellow means you've got one minute left, and red means stop. And I have one green sheet here from Patrick Riggs.
Well, as you know, I'm president of the Eureka Teachers Association, and I teach second grade at Alice Bernie as well. This evening, I just really wanted to, since it's really the first board meeting back, since we're back in the classrooms, to really say on behalf of the Eureka Teachers that we are looking forward to working with everybody this year and to having a very positive year this year. We hope they'll be even more positive after some good outcomes in the November election. And it's true, the teachers especially, we're very happy with the beginning-of-the-year staff get-together and your presentation. That was great. I'll tell you, there's nothing, there's nothing that you guys could do at this point in time to make the year even more positive than to prevent the teachers from being out of pocket any more money come October thirty-first, when that health insurance premium kicks up another eighty-five dollars per person. For the modest investment of seventeen thousand dollars, the approximate cost of one month of that at the end of October, and you know the November elections a few days later, you guys would have a tremendous amount of goodwill and buy-in from the teaching staff. So I just want to put that out as an idea to be in circulation and to be considered as well. I know the teachers would be delighted. Who knows what they might do? Thank you very much. I'm looking forward to working with everybody and hope you have, we all have a great year this year.
Public comments on non-agenda items. Here we go. We'll move to the consent calendar. Any questions or comments on any of the items? There are none. Do I hear a motion?
I move that we adopt the consent calendar.
I'll second.
There's been a motion and a second to approve the consent calendar. All those in favor say aye.
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 None opposed, motion means carries. M twenty-seven has been polled, so moving to M twenty-eight, beginning-of-the-school year report. Paul Ziegler.
First of all, there must be something wrong with the clock. It's only seven twenty-five, and I'm up here at the podium, so anyway.
That's okay, you can put us asleep at seven twenty-five, just like nine o'clock.
I might keep you here till nine, be careful. I won't do that. Beginning of the school year report, really what I want to focus on is to talk about the enrollment picture as we're kicking off the year. We'll do a comparison both to where we were at this point last year, as well as to what our adopted budget looks like. We'll be coming back at the next meeting to talk about some of the projects that happened around the district over the summer, the maintenance projects and stuff like that. But for tonight, we'll focus specifically on enrollment and take it away from there. As always, a little bit hard to see perhaps some of the numbers that are up there, and I think that there's, everybody has handouts. So I just want to kind of explain the three columns, the three boxes that are there. The first is the two thousand twelve, thirteen adopted budget, and this is what we built our twelve, thirteen budget on in terms of our enrollment and our ADA projections. The middle column is where we stood as of yesterday, the best count that we were able to come up with in terms of both enrollment and then trying to portray that as an ADA number as well. Last but not least, the third column to the right is the prior-year number. That was as of September second. So September fourth this year, September second last year, roughly the sixth day of school. So pretty early in the process to try to pull together enrollment numbers. That number is changing on a daily basis, but we tried to grab a point in time and go with that. I'll point out that the enrollment number for two thousand twelve, thirteen, the adopted budget, is really more of a Seabeds date. Seabeds being the first Wednesday in October, so that would be about a month, hence, if you're trying to do an apples-to-apples comparison. In most circumstances, we would expect that from the opening of school right now to that point in October, that we would see a decline in enrollment. Interestingly, that number went up last year, so it kind of blew that metric out, but, so it's not quite apples-to-apples, but I think for comparison purposes right now, it'll take us as close as we're able to get. So you can see, and I'll focus where we are with our current enrollment, the middle column. The enrollment numbers for elementary put us just over eighteen hundred, one thousand eight oh seven, which marked very close to this point as to where we were last year. Unfortunately, our projection for two thousand twelve, thirteen that we used as part of our budget showed the enrollment actually at a thousand eight sixty-six. We're under probably about thirty students or so in kindergarten is one of the most significant areas, where we are down both from a year-to-year and on a projected basis. And I'll get to a chart a little bit later that doesn't just show just the sites, how they compare year-to-year, but also breaks down on a, excuse me, a grade-level basis. So again, this does show that for each of the different sites. You can see where they were last year, where they are this year, and what our projection was for the various sites. I'm going to bring it all the way down to the bottom line then. We are right now at about three thousand six hundred and sixty-eight with our total enrollment, well short of where we were last year at thirty-eight, twenty-five, and also below what we had projected for the year.
Look, can you help me out with one figure? When we're talking about budgeting for this year, I know you've got your adopted budget up there, you've got our enrollment up there as of right now, what, are we going to get funded on that thirty-six hundred and sixty-eight, or are we going to get funded on the thirty-eight hundred and twenty-five that we had of prior year?
Good question. We will actually be funded on the thirty-five, seventy-six, ninety-one. That's the actual P-two ADA number that we had for last year. It's the last column down there at the bottom.
Can you explain how ADA is calculated then?
Sure. So ADA is really just that, a calculation of average daily attendance, kids that are, students that are in the district for those particular days. P-two is a cutoff point somewhere around the end of April, the end of May, and that P-two number, that ADA number, drives our revenue limit. There's also a prior-year guarantee. So from a budgeting standpoint, even though we used, our enrollment was, wrong one, even though our enrollment was this number, we were able to use the prior-year number of thirty-five, seventy-six, ninety-one to drive our revenue limit.
So simply, the ADA is the enrollment times the attendance percentage to get the ADA number? Thank you.
We generally, as a district, run about ninety-three and a quarter as our percentage of P-two ADA to enrollment. This is a little bit of a misnomer when I see ninety-three point five there. It's a little bit higher than we would see historically. Again, I think that has to do with the fact that we're picking up an enrollment number much earlier in the year as compared to a Seabeds number in October, which is usually when we do that comparison. And Fred asked the question, and there it is right there, so I'll look at Alice Bernie on the top line at ninety-three oh seven, so the four thirty-nine, twenty-eight is ninety-three percent of the four seventy-two. And you can see how each, each site compares in terms of what their actual attendance is relative to their enrollment. And it brings us down on a district basis, again, about ninety-three point five percent.
So Paul, can I just, just because I'm trying to understand that. So on that certain date that you're talking about in April, this percentage then is throughout the year, how many, with a percentage of attendance of the students? So is that what that means?
That's correct. And we actually, so there's a cutoff date in, can't remember, it varies, but it's either the end of April, start of May, and at that point, all the, you know, if one student had been there the entire time, we would get one full ADA for that one student. If one student had only attended half the time, it would be a point five ADA for that period of time.
Okay, so this is just a percentage then of all those students and the ones and the halves and the...
That's correct. That's correct, yeah. Here it is in graphic representation of, have tried to take each of the sites and show again the three points in time, the adopted budget, current year and prior year, and you can see on a site-by-site basis how they compare graphically. I'll move on to the next slide, excuse me, which slices things, I don't know if it's horizontally opposed to vertically or vice versa, but this is taking at the grade level all the, all the sites and separating them by grade level. And I think I'd referenced, referenced earlier, gotta quit doing that. Our enrollment last year for kindergarten, we actually, at Seabeds date, were at three oh eight, so we climbed another ten students, ten kindergarten students from, from the beginning of the year to the early point in October. If you do the comparison right now, it shows us to be down, you'd have to add both the transitional kindergarten plus the kindergarten for this year to come up with two sixty-one, as opposed to the two ninety-eight that we had at this point last year. So a little less than a thirty drop, but if you look where we were on a Seabeds basis in October, we're going to be, we would project to be thirty kindergarten, more than thirty kindergarten students less on a year-to-year basis. Again, you can see on a grade-to-grade basis how they compare year-to-year, compare against adopted budget. And one other thing I'll point out, I need a bigger clicker. These are put in bands when we get our ADA numbers, so first, second, and third grade all show as ninety-three point eight percent. That may not be the case, there may be some slight variation in there, but we took that one through three band, four through six is another band, seven, eight is a band, nine through twelve is a band. So as you see those numbers that are constant out in the far-right column, the percentage, it doesn't mean that we're really that exact in terms of how the ninth graders compare to the eleventh graders. We just use that number and roll it all the way forward. And here again, we see a graph that shows the enrollment by grade, adopted budget, current year, and prior year.
More seniors. It's interesting.
And I heard what Fran said there, and it's a really good point, as you look at our, for this year, our senior class is a three hundred and thirty-eight, and it's the largest of our three high school classes. So we're going to be graduating one of our largest cohorts this year with a relatively smaller cohort of kindergartens, kindergartners at the bottom, and that reverses a trend that we'd seen over the last couple of years, of seeing the kindergarten numbers increase. So we have to go out and get more students, clearly. So with that, any questions? Great, thank you.
Nice. Thank you.
Now, we moved item C three to discuss next.
All right, so not to confuse you anymore, but C three, you're going to have to pull from the study session backup, it's not part of the normal backup there. Should be titled C three, Resolution to Support. Should look something like this right here. And everybody with me?
I will be.
Okay, we'll give you a second here. Sorry for that confusion, it's just in a different packet.
C three. It's round. I know when I'm trying to find it. There we go.
All right, so what I'm coming with you, to you this evening is just a discussion item to give me some general direction as far as what you would like me to bring to the board and when you would like me to bring it to the board, if you want a resolution for you to act on. And right now, CSBA is recommending that boards adopt resolutions in support of Proposition Thirty and Proposition Thirty-eight. There's some definite differences between those two propositions. ETA, I believe, is going along with CTA and backing Proposition Thirty, but not backing Proposition Thirty-eight.
Same with retired teachers.
Same with retired teachers. So there's some disparity out there as far as what the recommendation is to back. I'm not going to provide a recommendation to you simply because that's not something that I believe is something that I can do, other than I can talk about some of the facts. Some of the facts right now, Proposition Thirty is the governor's, you may have heard it as a governor's ballot initiative, and a couple of things that I want to call to your attention about the governor's ballot initiative is if the governor's ballot initiative does not pass, we are looking at somewhere in the neighborhood of, I believe the last number was four forty-one, is that correct? Four hundred and forty-one dollars coming straight off the top of our revenue limit is an automatic trigger as a mid-year reduction to our revenue limit. That would be catastrophic to this district if we had a four hundred and forty-one dollar cut. It's something that there is no way that we can sustain under our current staffing-dollar numbers. It's also no way that we can sustain the deficit spending into the future that that would cost us. If you take a look at our multi-year projection, the four hundred and forty-one dollars is built into our multi-year projection. We're able to live barely for three years, but have an enormously high deficit spending rate. With that being said, if the governor's ballot initiative does pass, that means absolutely no new money for Eureka City Schools. What that means is that there's not going to be any cuts, and the deferrals will be cut. You've heard me talk about deferrals in the past, and what those basically are is, I consider it a money game, because that's really what it is, is they take cash that's due to us in the current fiscal year, and some of it they do inter-year deferrals, some of it they even defer off to the next fiscal year, and puts us in a very tough cash position. You've heard us talk about that several times in staff reports, so I won't spend a lot of time talking about cash, but if it does pass, it'll help our cash position to a certain extent, but not all deferrals will go away. The trigger cut is not scheduled to happen if it does pass, but there is some big questions about whether the current state budget will work, because we're already far below the projected revenues that were built into the budget for the current year. So there's some problems that we'll definitely have to face if California revenues do not pick up at all. So that's really Proposition Thirty in a nutshell as far as how it would affect Eureka City Schools. So just real quickly, no new funding, no matter what happens, it's kind of like a double-edged sword. You get the ballot initiative passed, but we don't get any new funding. If the ballot initiative doesn't pass, not only do we not get any new funding, the deferrals continue, and we have a four hundred and forty-one dollar cut to the revenue limit. So I will leave that in your very capable hands as far as what you want to do as a resolution to support Proposition Thirty. Proposition Thirty-eight is commonly referred to as a Molly Munger ballot initiative or the PTA ballot initiative. There's both groups that are behind that, and it is a much different reform than what the governor's ballot initiative is. The target behind the Molly Munger initiative is to... There's both groups that are behind that, and it is a much different reform than what the governor's ballot initiative is. The target behind the Molly Mungar initiative is to restructure the funding for education over a period of time and provide more local control to schools. There's lots of little idiosyncrasies that go along with that local control, because it's not just free rein, as far as, okay, here's your money, do whatever you want with it, but it completely restructures how schools are funded. One of the questions comes up, what happens if both initiatives passes? And right now, the governor's initiative is just over 50%, and none of the negative campaign ads have come out against that. At the same time, none of the positive campaign ads have come out against that either. I know that CTA has had a rather large commitment to supporting Proposition 30, so it's really up in the air whether the governor's initiative will pass at this point. I think minimally, we can say it's going to be a close election. The Molly Mungar initiative right now is under 50% in the polls, and it is not likely that the Molly Mungar initiative will pass, because none of the negative campaign ads have started against that ballot initiative at this point. In the very unlikelihood that both initiatives pass, whichever initiative gets the most votes will be the initiative that mainly takes part. There's a few areas of the Molly Mungar that would, that are not in direct conflict with the governor's initiative that would happen if they both pass, but there's really not much at all. And so most likely would be Prop 30 that would take place, because I think that one will, just looking at the preliminary polls and taking a wild guess based on the polls, would be the one that would have the most votes. So with that, you have some sample language in here as part of this item C3 from CSBA that has sample resolutions, and just some CSBA positioning information on it, and their campaign to stand up for education, boards urged to pass resolutions supporting both propositions 30 and 38.
So this is just a discussion item now.
Correct.
As to whether to bring it back at the next board meeting or a possible discussion action.
Correct. So if I get a, just general direction that you want, an initiative, or, excuse me, a resolution brought back for the next board meeting, or possibly strategically thinking you may want to be thinking about an October board meeting, since it's closer to the ballot date, that's the direction that I'm looking for right now.
I would like to point out that the California State PTA, or that, actually, the 22nd District PTA, which covers our county and Del Norte County, is hosting a forum where the League of Women Voters are going to come and present both of the propositions to the public. Everybody's invited, it's on September 27th. They'll give you more information about the differences between the two, and without taking a stand on either side, they're very clear on that it's just informational, and I would like to ask that we not bring this back until after that meeting on the 27th. So I'd not like to see it back on the next board agenda, but possibly the October board agenda.
What's the date of the October, 1st October board meeting?
October 3rd. Let me verify that. You're faster than me, thank you. October 3rd. That is correct. And then we also have an October board meeting on October 17th.
By October 17th, half the people are voting for the PTAs.
Good point.
I have a question for Paul. 441 as the, if it doesn't pass, the hit we'd take per ADA?
1,575.
Well, on our adopted budget, was that based on 441 or 457?
We did use 441.
Okay.
And I think some of the difference between the two is where the revenue will come from, and I believe that with Proposition 30, my understanding is that the tax, there will be an increased tax on higher wage earners, 250,000 and above, and also on, there will be a slight increase to the sales tax.
That's my understanding.
And on 38, everybody's going to get an increase on their income tax, and that is, I think, a big reason that I know that the union that I belong to, California Nurses Association, is sponsoring, is supporting 30. I think that one of the reasons that the, in the CSBA's reasoning, and some people's reasoning on supporting both, is to not confuse voters, and get, and just get a yes vote on both of them, and then the one with the higher vote is going to be the one that takes over, and I think a lot of people think that that will be 30. But at this point in time, my stance would be to support Proposition 30.
That would be my stance, too.
Except that if 30 didn't pass, we would, we would want 38 to at least pass. 38 would be better than nothing. So that's an argument in favor of voting to endorse both of them.
And I want to point out, I took two hours of training specifically on the differences between the two and the Prop 38 at the Board of Managers meeting that the PTA did, and there's some, some very clear, or very unclear situations that could evolve because of some of the language, and even the lawyers right now are having problems with some of the language that's written, that if both of them pass, that it's not just a simple matter of whichever one has the most votes is going to take over, because the Molly Mungar initiative allows for portions of Prop 30 to remain intact, whereas the governor's initiative has language specifically excluding if his initiative passes, not whether it passes by the highest, the higher margin. And the lawyers still haven't figured that out, and I'm hoping that with the conversation with the League of Women Voters, that we might be able to get a clearer understanding of what exactly that means. The biggest reason the PTA is supporting the Molly Mungar initiative, which is now called, well, the PTA Initiative now, she's kind of backed out, but is that it does provide new money to schools, whereas the governor's proposal gives us flat funding, which we're not having, you know, it's, anyway, I want to argue the points of the two. Like I said, I would really like to wait before this comes back and not take a stand when we have some really good information that we...
So I would be in favor of bringing it on the October 3rd agenda, but I would like to have a, a long, in the back of maybe one paragraph of the taxes for each of them, and of the additional, or the revenues for the districts on each of them as well.
I have a question or two, and it really has to do with the effect we think we're going to have with a resolution. Obviously, we're all here because we support education. There's a lot of people in our community that see the schools in a different light, and I think you, you've heard the term dipping into the public trough. And we are supporters of education, but what are we trying to accomplish with a resolution of support? Who are we trying to influence, other than, we need to get the message out, what it means if it doesn't pass? The huge cut we'd take? This isn't a solution to the funding problems that we're facing in the state. We're still horribly underfunded for education. It's almost an oxymoron to say that this is going to solve something. What we're trying to avoid is getting slammed again by another $441. And I just, I question the wisdom. I wouldn't vote against a resolution, but I wonder what we're trying to accomplish with it. Anybody could respond to that?
Well, I think it's just important, if, you need to stand up and support the, an initiative to show that you are supporting education. I mean, that is what, it's why we're here. I definitely think that we need to take a stance, and I think that everybody should, and I think every, I mean, the teachers, everybody, the community, we all need to get out there and support this initiative to pass, because, and like you said, even when, if this initiative passes, this, we're still horribly underfunding education, but we need to be the ones that are out there yelling that and saying, you're underfunding the education, something needs to be done about it. That's, I mean, that's why we're here, and so we need to be spearheading that and be the ones out there saying, you know, this isn't right, we need to do something about this. And this may not be the best solution, and I don't think it is. I think we need a whole lot more funding than what this is going to bring, but we need to, definitely need to be championing the cause.
And I agree with Susan, if there's any element, the reason that any group gets behind, or takes a stance on any of the initiatives is to lend their support and their voice for anybody that's out in the community that says, well, how come the school board isn't supporting one of these initiatives? Or how come the CTA, or the ETA, or, you know, the CSEA isn't supporting one of these initiatives? Well, whoever the community is responding to is going to, you know, take notice of every group, whether it's a school board, and, you know, the community relies on the school board to actually be looking into funding for education and understanding it. So just what, to mimic what Susan said, we need to take a stand and lend our voice to it.
I think it'll, it won't help a whole lot, I mean, it's not going to swing the whole entire election of how we vote, but it won't hurt either, and it might swing a few votes, who knows?
Okay, so the direction I feel like I'm getting is that you want a ballot initiative resolution to come back. The clarity I need is, it sounds like 30 is on there. The clarity I need is 38, because there's some conversation going in both directions on 38. I can bring, the options of what I can bring you back is I can bring one resolution supporting both of them, and I could bring you one individual resolution of each of them, so you can discuss it further on October 3rd, after you've had more information, so you can choose one of three options. So either a resolution with both, a resolution with 30, and a resolution with 38.
Sounds good.
All right.
Okay, so we will be adjourning, going back into closed session, and is there any public comment on closed session items? We will be discussing items.
E6, E7, E8, and E9.
During no discussion, then we'll move to closed session.
Brilliant. Shortest meeting I've ever been to.
You guys did a great job.
Brilliant, brilliant.
Enjoy your guys' circle jerk.
So were you told you couldn't let your children play?
Yeah, gave me a ticket to boot, I don't know what, I've...